We are holding this meeting in person and online with the link provided in the agenda as per usual since the pandemic. I'm going to begin with roll call. Counselor Gass.
Present.
Counselor McGuire.
Present.
Counselor Meany.
Present.
Counselor Hite.
Here.
And I am Counselor Chapel. To my right is newly appointed town manager, interim town manager Josh Tiffany. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the town council meeting on September 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll second, I guess.
Okay.
But I actually have a couple of.
Well.
We have to pull it back.
Perhaps we should pull it out then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll pull it out as a separate item. So we are looking for a motion to approve the town council minutes from September 5th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so it sounds like people have some edits. Who wants to go first?
Mm-hmm.
Dan?
Uh, yeah, I just have two, and they're both small, but on packet page seven, the last sentence should refer to LD1, I think, not LD2001. And the packet page nine, second paragraph, line four should read Route 100 paving, not Route 1. Both small edits, but I think if people were looking at the minutes, it would.
2001 is when the LD law passed there, I think might be some of the confusion.
Yeah, and it, but it's always called LD1.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, um, are we supposed, are we still sending those edits to Claire, or should they come to you and then you'll relay them to Claire? What would you like to, what would you like to do?
I would say send it straight to Claire.
Okay.
Or let's do that until then, and if that causes problems.
Okay, well, yeah, maybe just, Ann, when you send your edits, maybe just copy Josh, just so she knows that that was okay.
Not sure if I have her email, but.
Uh, Claire Zimmerman, I believe.
Claire Zimmerman.
Anyone else have edits?
I have none.
I don't have any. Matthew?
No, but I will be abstaining from the vote.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, I'm just looking for a vote. Ann?
Uh, yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Abstaining.
Abstaining, yeah, and I'm also a yes. Next up is public comments of non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to non-agenda items? Nope, just Tim here for Public Works, so he sees good. And then I don't see anyone online who would like to speak. So we can close the public comments at 7:07 PM. Now, does anyone have any adjustments to the agenda? I know I at least have one. Do you?
I have one.
Okay. I will start with mine. I would propose moving action item three up to number one. Action item three is the MB paving or plowing contract. That's what Tim is here to speak on, so we could let him speak to that and then move on with this evening. Everyone's okay with that?
So moved. Do we have to vote?
I don't know. Do we have to vote on that?
I think we do have to vote to actually change the agenda.
Okay, so do I have a motion to move, well, why don't we go through all the adjustments and then we'll have one vote?
Sure, fair enough.
And then I'm also adding a authorization for the bond. I apologize for not, for missing that when I created the agenda. We need to formally vote on moving forward with the bond after it was approved at town meeting on the ninth. So council just needs to move that forward. So I am proposing adding that as action item 10, or yes, 10. And then, Dan, you had, you had one?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to have Melinda Shee's application to the planning board approved tonight. That could be number 11. She's not here. The planning board was unable to have a quorum, which is why later on this evening I'll be making a motion to table the public hearing for the self-storage units. They will have to hold their public hearing before we can hold our second one. So getting Melinda's application approved quickly will get the planning board back in business again.
Are there any other adjustments to the agenda proposed? No, okay. So do I have a motion to make the adjustments as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, so next up is a public hearing, which is the second, second reading and public hearing to review proposed changes to the zoning ordinance. Chapter 402, changes include the addition of a new section, 402.8.11, self-storage facility standards, and amendment of the Village Center design standards. I'm actually looking for a motion to table this, and Dan, would you maybe have some remarks?
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion to table this. At the, the public hearing that is required for the planning board to hold their last meeting, they were unable to because the terms of two of their members had lapsed. One of their members is not returning, which means we have a planning board with just three members instead of the hopeful five, with three. And so we want to approve Melinda's application tonight so that they can be back in business and have a quorum. That will probably put our, that will put our public hearing off until our second meeting in October.
Yeah, so the proposed dates I had from planning for the adjustments would be, the public hearing for the planning board would be on October 16th, and then our second read and public hearing here for council would be on the following day, October 17th. Do I have a second for tabling?
Yes.
Second to table.
Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Plenty of information.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think the folks that just walked in were hoping to speak to us tonight. Unfortunately, we've passed that section in our agenda whereby we were normally, where we were allowed to do that. There is an opportunity at the end of the meeting to have your say, but I would warn you that that might be a while. So I don't know how you want to proceed.
I wonder if I could make a motion to go revisit that, public addressing the council agenda item and open that up.
Can we revisit that? I, I don't, I don't know if we can.
We've already, we've already made adjustments to the agenda. I, anybody can make a motion, I guess. It would require four out of five.
To adjust the.
To adjust it.
Yeah.
To amend our rules or to change our rules.
I'll make a motion to allow public comments for, on non-agenda items.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes, yeah. Did you, were you all hoping to make a? Public comment? Yeah, there's a, there's a three-minute limit anyway, so. Yeah, if you could just say your name, if you could just say your names and sign in at the podium, yeah.
You want us to sign in now or after we talk?
We can do it after you talk or now, whichever is easier, but if you could just say your names for the people watching at home.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Winslow Maxwell.
Hi, I'm Camille Romero.
And my name is Andre Jenkins.
The reason why we're here tonight is we would like to introduce ourselves to put a face with the name. Basically, our intentions are to open a retail medical marijuana cannabis business within your community. Make a long story short, we're pretty well woven into the fabric of this community. My daughter has been going to school here for over a decade. Camille?
I graduated in 2011 from Gravenbroaster High School.
And I've been in the town of Graves since 2017.
So basically, what we're trying to do is give back to the community. We see that there's a need within the community, and we want to provide for that need. And if there's any questions or comments, either now or at a future time, we would be more than happy to answer them. But again, we're just, we're trying to put a face with our intentions, and we do appreciate your time.
Could I just ask, when you sign in, will one of you just leave some contact information so we can?
Absolutely.
And we want to apologize for being late as well. We attended the race car meeting on accident. We went through this about 10 minutes ago. We didn't even steal first, and then we made it.
No worries, you're not really that late. We're just, it's, we're just very formulaic in our.
Absolutely.
And we appreciate you guys taking the time. Thanks very much.
Thank you for the motion.
Yeah, I just, I do want to tell you, you stopped by to our workshop, our retreat on this weekend to also introduce yourselves, so thank you for taking the time for that. We did have a conversation about the ordinances we have, more than amendments were, that have been pending as a conversation for the council and the priorities. We have heard from a lot of business, the business community, there's an interest in having retail spaces for both medical and retail cannabis. You're not the only ones who've mentioned that to the council recently. What we haven't heard from is residents, and back when cannabis was legalized for the state, there was a referendum statewide, as you're probably familiar with. The town of Graves voted pretty overwhelmingly against marijuana legalization, so at the time, the ordinance was written in a very restrictive way, which I'm also sure you're aware of. So what we don't have a sense for now is how much has changed for residents and their opinions, and so we were proposing having a referendum on a future ballot, hopefully in 2024, to get a sense for whether or not residents would like to revisit that ordinance before we move forward with any changes. So I just wanted to update you on that. We were hoping to do it in November during the presidential election because we would have a greater turnout of people voting. So that's our intention moving forward, so I just want to give you an update on where we are with that ordinance.
We appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So currently, retail is, would not be approvable.
Right, that's right. In the, in the current ordinance, yeah, we don't have, there's not, retail spaces are not allowed.
And definitely our intentions to work with the town and the residents of the town with whatever they want or need to get this working for the town.
Right, right. And I, I mean, I know that since legalization, that people are much more open to it, but we, like I said, we just don't have a real sense for what the majority of Gray residents would like, so we'd like to hear from them also.
Absolutely, but we would also like to put on the record that the location that we have secured is also within the guidelines, within the state and your local guidelines.
Okay.
As far as not being within 1,000 feet of a school, 1,000 feet of a daycare, 1,000 feet of a church.
Okay.
Great.
Just so you're aware.
Well, we will certainly consider that if we see something from you in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, so now we're up back to action items and.
Back to our regularly scheduled program.
Back to regular scheduled program. And we have moved what was action item three up to action item one. So I'm looking for a motion to review and act upon authorizing the proposed optional year winter maintenance contract extension with MB contracting for the 2023-2024 plow season.
So moved.
Second.
And thank you, Krista, for, for making the motion to move this.
Yeah.
Oh, great, yeah. That was actually Josh's recommendation.
Thank you, Josh.
Tim pulled me to it, so.
Whoever made it, thank you. We've been meaning to make this more of a part of our regular practice so that staff doesn't have to.
Yeah, I should try to pay more attention to the agendas and know where staff fits in this and move everything to the top that's staff-related, anyway.
I'm, Jim Estes, the interim public works director. And all of you probably got the sheet from John. This has went up 28% from last year. We knew that was coming, that's why I put the extra in the budget for this particular reason. And the only thing that I want to bring forward is we're going to have to really sharpen our pencils for next year. I can guarantee you that is going to go up again that much, if not more, because both contracts next year are due. There's no more, no more extending them out there. This is the third year for both of them.
Do you know if this current contractor has expressed an interest in resubmitting?
One of the contractors has, the other has not.
Go ahead, Dan.
So folks that are watching, these contracts are for winter maintenance agreements.
On private roads.
On, yeah, public ways, which are almost always private roads. And my question, I guess, is what are, are there, is there anything that you can identify in either the conditions of the roads or the circumstances of the roads that is making them less attractive for people to bid on?
I don't think it's that. I think it's just the work out there and what people are paying them. You've got DOT that are paying private contractors almost $9,000 a mile. And we're paying, you know, largely less than that.
Well, but DOT roads are significantly bigger than the one I.
Well, but still, it's still by the Centennial Mile.
Yeah, but I, I guess the, the reason I ask that is that we've had this issue for a while now. This isn't the first time we've not had a lot of bids. And I just, I guess I wanted to make sure if there was something that we could do to address issues that are, that are dissuading people from bidding on these, I would just want to know.
I don't think, I don't think there's any particular reason why people are not bidding. I just think it's, it's just like the workforce, there's nobody.
It's just like striping. It's more expensive.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
And by the way, that is all done, and we saved almost $6,500.
Yeah, we've noticed that. Thank, I, it's so much better, so much safer, so thank you for.
We can get him to come back next year.
Yeah, that would be great, yeah. We'll spend that money now.
Yeah.
Anyone else have comments on this contract?
So just could you refresh our memory that, so the money that you, the extra money you had in the budget is, will cover the additional cost?
Correct, yeah, there'll be, there should be no, no overages, and I actually set aside a little bit for any new roads that came along, and which one did. So we will have enough money in there, even with this increase.
And, and just very quickly, could you just describe for people who are watching who may not understand this town maintenance of, of private roads?
Okay, the only, when the, the private road association signs a winter easement, that, I don't want to say it opens up the road to public, but we can use public funds on those private roads once they sign the easement.
It does open it to the public.
Yes, yes. So that's, that's how that works, and there's not many towns around that actually do that.
Right, so it's an additional cost to the town to use, to, for the town to pay for plowing of public, of private roads, but they also have to bring the road up to standards, right?
Correct, and we usually go through them in the fall. I'll get with Mr. Osgood and, and, and the other gentleman, and we, we will ride them, and we'll notify the road association presidents whether they need service or not, and if they do and they fail to fix them, then it's, then they don't have to plow them.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, there is also, there is a benefit to the public in that the public gains access to those rights of way.
Right.
That is true, and I can, if I put my president of Johnson Road Association hat on, I can attest to the fact that they will in fact call us and tell us that we have some work to do before the ground.
We had a few last fall, and we're going to have more this year from what I can see.
I think one thing I'd be interested in knowing eventually, it's not urgent, but before we put the budget together next year, is that we do have some requirements on the associations as far as reporting and as far as the maintenance, adhering to those standards that Ann talked about. It would be nice to have, you know, just kind of a simple report as to, is everybody complying, and, you know, are there any issues that are, like I said, that, that we need to address?
I know there's a couple of roads that Mr. Osgood plows that they really don't have, well, they supposedly have a road association, but when it comes up every year that the road needs to be resurfaced or, or there needs to be gravel put in potholes, that they never have any money to go do it.
Wyndham recently, and I don't know, Matthew might not have one yet, and I can circulate it. In MMA's monthly magazine, recently, there was an article outlining the town of Wyndham's efforts with regard to these kinds of roads. And they actually posted placards at the end of each of these roads, I think it was a year or so ago, saying that if you don't meet the new standards, you no longer be plowed. And, and I think we have standards in our ordinance, and the expectation is if associations aren't meeting those standards, then I think we have a duty to hold them accountable, and either they have to find a way to meet those standards or, or there may be some that we don't, no longer can pass.
I know Mr. Osgood last year put some signs up at the end of roads and explained if it wasn't fixed, it wasn't going to get plowed.
Yeah, I don't, and I don't think that should fall to the contractor to do that.
No.
I mean, I think that's our responsibility to do.
I mean, it's very tough for me, being a public works director, to go on 45 private roads and go check them out.
We have 32-odd miles of these winter maintenance roads and.
Plus my 65 that I have to take care of.
Exactly, and so I think we, we associations have to do our part to, in order to keep reaping the benefit of this service.
I'm just, I'm just curious, if most towns don't do this, provide this service, what would be the ramifications of, of Gray not doing this?
Well, obviously, there'd be a lot of contention over that by the people that live on, I don't know what percentage of our real estate is on those 32 miles of road.
Apparently.
If we have 32 and he has 65, it sounds like roughly a third of the town.
Yeah, apparently, this is a kind of a lake, a lake region, lakes region anomaly with a lot of towns in the lakes region.
There are a lot of towns around us that still.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I realize that, you know, some residents wouldn't, wouldn't like it, but I mean, it would basically make the problem of finding a contractor their problem and not our problem.
I realize that I, and I've abstained from these votes before because I am the president of our association, but there are other responsibilities the town has for fire safety and other services that would be at risk if the, if the roads weren't maintained. I know Doug and I have talked about this, that there are plenty of towns that have road standards that allow for gravel roads. New Gloucester is one of them. So this all came about from a Supreme Court case years ago that, that ruled on the spending of public money on private property, but that's why in order to get winter maintenance agreements, all the people who live on the road have to sign easements to allow the public access to their road. So it's not really, my road really isn't any different from Westwood Road or any other road that's a town road as far as public access is concerned, yeah.
And I mean, this contract, by this contract going up, isn't the only thing that's gone up. Everything's gone up, so.
Yeah.
I mean, my salt's gone up, but everything's gone up, and I, next year, it's going to go up another 20%, I can guarantee.
Right, and theory, and probably not even theoretically, I'm sure this contractor's salt prices and things have, or do, do they use our salt?
No, they actually, they actually get the same from, they, they get the material from us.
Do they get their gas also from us?
No.
Okay, but, but that's gone up too, so.
The, the only other thing I guess I would say is that they, well, never mind, I won't prolong the conversation.
Well, I mean, paying more is one thing. I mean, yeah, everything goes up and paying more, but it sounds like there's even a problem with getting the bids at all, is that right?
Well, this year, we're good, but next year, I can't, I can't guarantee that.
For people who are maybe watching and listening or aren't familiar with the topic, one of the reasons why we subcontract this out actually is to save the town money. The equipment that's needed to plow a road like mine isn't the same as what you need to plow Main Street or Shake-A-Road.
So if, I actually thought about this and tried to figure this out today, so if you, if they wanted the town, us, to, to take care of that, I'd need four more vehicles and four more full-time people in order to, in order to do that.
Right, but we might be in that circumstance if, if we can't get a contractor.
But I'm just saying, as far as the cost to hire four, four full-timers plus four more vehicles, you gotta stop and figure that.
Yeah, this is a significantly less expensive solution, which is why I asked if there were any obstacles to, to, to finding interested contractors.
And, yeah, I'm not suggesting that we take over the, that, that wasn't.
No, but that's.
No, I understand, I just, it's just information.
It's probably cheaper, to be honest with you, to contract it out through a, than it is to hire four full-time people and get four more vehicles.
Especially when you have to find work for those four full-time people when it's not.
In, in the summer, correct.
That's always been one of the issues. I think we have actually one buildings and grounds person now that you share.
We're going to be hiring one, part-time with me in the winter, or full-time with me in the winter and full-time with me in the summer.
Yeah.
Any other comments before we vote? Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
So next up is to remove from the table the rules for the town council meetings and workshops. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I don't think we need discussion on removing from the table. So now I'm just looking for a motion to review and act upon reaffirming the rules for town council meetings and workshops.
Yeah, we got a motion to remove.
Oh, do, sorry, you're right, we do. Yep, my mistake, okay. So now we're, sorry, back to number two, we're voting. No, actually, yeah, number two, we're to remove from the table the rules for town council meetings and workshops. Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So now we can move on to old to number, now new number three, to review and act upon reaffirming the rules for town council meetings and workshops.
So moved.
Second.
Starts on packet page 31.
Yes, thank you. Was it 31?
Yep.
This was a lot of work.
It was a lot of work, yeah. I wanted, yeah, just thank Dan for taking the time to edit all this. I know we talked about it at our first meeting in June, and we, we had forgot about it for a while, now we're revisiting, so I appreciate the time you put in. So just a note on packet page 32 that Dan, Dan noted here that a lot of the formatting and page breaks haven't been finalized, and that he'll do that once we vote on completed draft. He changed all the references to chairperson to only be chair, so that they're consistent, and that any use of him or her was changed to there. So those are changes throughout. Does anyone have any suggestions or comments based on what's here?
Bound to be. These are the rules, please.
Right.
Yeah, it's always dangerous to ask me to look at any document. Sorry, it's like a sickness.
I don't see it anymore, so I'm glad someone else read it.
So, first of all, I want to say that, you know, the change, the edits were really helpful. I, I thought that it makes it way more readable, and, and it was a huge amount of work and it, and very valuable, very value-added. So, but I do have some questions and some, some tiny edits. The, on the, on packet page 33, I, I just wondered if the first two under A, the regular meetings of the town council, should be combined into one.
Sure, yeah, that's a simple one. I didn't pick up, didn't see that, but easily.
Yeah, and also on that same page, and same section, under five, do we have the ability to switch a meeting to be entirely remote due to inclement weather?
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should probably add that. Yeah, one of the edits, and I'll get to the rest of mine in a minute, but one of the edits I wanted to make was under number one, we needed to account for our hybrid policy. So, so it's in-person and hybrid via remote means, per the hybrid and remote meeting policy that was adopted. But yeah, we should add a remote option in number five.
Okay, all, basically all remote?
All remote, and all remote, yeah.
Okay.
Anybody, anything else in that section? Do we want to go section by section?
Makes sense, sure, just go down through.
That was all I had in that section, yeah.
Okay.
Under, under council workshops and special meetings, oh, this is a tiny edit, so I, you know, workshop meetings, there's a, after, under A, workshops, the first sentence there, there's a comma there that doesn't belong.
Yep.
So, also under packet page 33, under special meetings, so lower down the page. It seemed to me that, that said, on that, under number three, the last sentence, the, the.
That whole three is one sentence, which is, I know, probably ideal, but.
Well, I, I actually, I, I thought retaining, either retaining the word said or just putting in the, in place of it, would, would clarify that sentence a little bit more, but.
24 hours before the time for holding the special. Twenty-four hours before the time for holding the special meeting?
The special meeting unless all members of the council sign a waiver of either said notice or the notice, the notice would be fine, so yeah, that's, sorry, the fourth set, fourth line.
That's right, so add the word the would work for you.
Yeah, that would be fine.
I, I had a comment on number three there also, B, special meetings, number three, um. This is not common practice when we hold special meetings, where we have to deliver, you know, have the meeting notice served in-person or left at the residence of each member of the town council at least twenty-four hours before. Um, I would be amenable to totally deleting that, cause it just seems impractical, but, um, also if we don't wanna delete it, perhaps we could just add an email option or a text phone call option, I just, um.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I, I just don't ever see myself to can delivering notes to all of you, but I just.
I, yeah, and I can, uh, yes.
I don't see it as an effective way to notify me of anything, yeah.
And I, I confess I didn't check, this made me wonder if the charter was driving this one, but I haven't checked to see if that's true. Cause the charter has what I would consider some archaic, um, you know, which is understandable because things change over time, but. So as to deleting the whole thing, if it's not in the charter, I guess I don't have a problem with that, or if you wanna add by email, I don't have a problem with that either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you could just change it to just noticed or notified.
Yeah, and, yeah, notice of such meetings should be, could be served in-person, you know, by email or left at the residence, you can just throw that in there.
Or just open up to, will be served within twenty-four hours, because in ten years, it could be a whole other communication means that we're not including.
Editing it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, well, you're just worried the charter says something else, Dan.
I can check and if it doesn't, then, if it doesn't, do you wanna just strike it, or do you want?
I would wanna strike, or left at the residence, that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, we're, we're not on work ethic anymore, I just think, I'm.
I'm gonna work all day, somebody leave a note at my door, you know.
We're gonna do that.
Oh, put it in my mailbox, oh, I didn't get the mail?
No, I know you didn't write that, I know you didn't write that, Dan.
Making me feel old.
I don't think you're the oldest one here.
I, I, it's funny that I, I looked at that and I thought, well, you know, if counselors aren't speaking to each other, you know, because they're such toxic.
Yeah, that does happen.
I suspect that's why this was written, to make a notice of them.
But I think also that email or phone call or text or something, you know, some combination of those, yeah.
Notice of such meetings shall be served in-person.
Or electronically.
Or by phone or email?
I like electronically, I thought that, that sounds good, maybe I'll just text you, but yeah.
In-person or electronically.
It says, oh, here in the charter, it says, special town meetings may be called by the council. All registered voters of the town are eligible to vote at annual or special, although that's actually, that's a separate type of meeting, never mind, that's a town meeting, not a regular meeting.
So, notice of such meetings shall be served in-person or electronically at least twenty-four hours before. Is that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, no, that's, I can, I can do that.
Uh, okay, uh, next, uh, that was an interesting little trip into the past. Uh, let's see, uh, packet page thirty-four, um, on, let's see, uh. Oh, I, this is just, these are minor ones, um, I, I think under C, meeting packets and documentation, just, you know, be consistent with capitalizing the first, um.
Oh, I see, yep.
It's, it's just not a big deal, but, um.
That's.
Uh, as long as we're changing it, you might as well.
Yep.
Um, and then packet page thirty-four, the last bullet, um, uh. I, I just, I, I was sort of puzzled by this, uh, it's, it reads, when it is anticipated there will be an unusually large volume of background materials, uh, is expected to be submitted by proponents or opponents of an issue, which, um, that last clause, Dan recommends striking, the chair may require submissions to be made at least two weeks or more in advance. And I, I'm just wondering, I, I don't recall that ever happening in my service in the council, and I, I just wonder how critical that is.
Actually, that was put in there the first year.
Oh.
That I was on the council, I don't, I think it was a reaction to an event, so, as opposed to, you know, the norm.
Yeah.
Because I, I don't think it's ever come up then, but, since then, but, um.
I mean, it does say may require, I mean.
Yeah, it's, it.
I'm okay with leaving it in there.
Okay, just, yep, just wanted to check with that.
Yep, sure.
I did have edits in that section also, so, one was a question, perhaps this needs to be an amendment later on, and at a different day in time, but we had talked about adding a public comment section for regular meetings and work, and also workshops, which we didn't include here, so. Um, maybe do we just wanna revisit that, and, cause we don't have rules surrounding what that would look like right now, so.
If we were gonna do that, my suggestion would be to add that to A, which I'm okay doing, because that speaks specifically to the agendas.
Well, right, but then it would be B, right, because it'd be a workshop meeting agenda?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I think I'd be in favor of.
I could add language there, yeah, I would be in favor of that.
Just like having it there, and we could create some rules around what that looks like.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I think that's.
And then s- under.
So, I'm sorry, just to.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead, under B, six oh two dot oh three B.
Just to add, uh, allowing, create a mechanism to allow public comment at workshops.
Yeah.
Okay, I can work something out.
And then, under, oh, go ahead.
Under, if I, for regular meeting agendas, there's no public comment on agenda items, is that correct? Or is there pervy, like, is the public allowed to comment on agenda items, like on a, on a motion or?
I think technically they are, because otherwise it would fall under the non-agenda commentable section.
Usually, well.
You'd have to be recognized by the chair, I think, but.
There's, we're required to have public hearings in certain circumstances, so that's O E ordinances, or land use ordinances actually, in specific. Um, but I don't think there's a requirement, um, an actual requirement to allow speech at any, for any point of business, but the chair has a lot of leeway that way, so.
I would like to, I would like for there to be, you know, an opportunity for people to comment on, on agenda items, like after under discussion, or, you know, maybe a separate section for public discussion after, you know, motion and second.
If, if we were gonna do that, my.
At least on first reading.
My suggestion would, well, if it's first read, then there's a public hearing, so then that's covered.
Right, but under action items, there's generally not a section for public hearing, but I see what Matthew's saying.
Yeah, and I, I don't have an objection to that, my, my suggestion would be that if there is public comment on agenda items, that that happened before we discussed.
Yes, I agree with that.
And the reason for that is so that we can take that feedback into consideration, that would be my only point.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So I can put a, you know, the chair may allow public comment on.
Motions and.
On, on, on all action items in the agenda to happen at, you know, before the council discussion, I can put something like that in if you want.
I would favor it.
And that would go under regular meetings?
Yes, item A.
Okay, so I can, I can definitely do that, allow public comment.
Um, I had some, when you're done writing, I had some other.
It used to be about the forty minutes, forty words a minute in high, in junior high, I've lost that.
So, under section A there, we're pretty restrictive about the nine days prior information, about, um, nothing being added to the agenda if it's an ordinance resolve, um, order or resolve unless it's an emergency nature.
Right.
Um, I don't think we usually follow that rule, just given, like, for instance, tonight, we'll be considering the go-bond authorization as an order.
That would be under, under, that would.
Would that be an emergency? I wasn't sure.
I think that would be the consideration, but maybe, maybe, um, I think the, the reason for the emergency is that it can't just be, you know, a mechanism that the council uses to tuck stuff in at the last minute without the appropriate public notification.
Okay.
So in this particular case, be, with the bond, in my mind, why that rises to this is because we have this interest rate.
We have to lock that in.
We've, we wanna lock that in, so, I think that would qualify myself.
Okay, I just didn't know how we were using the word emergency, cause there's some stuff that's like, you know, we have to deal with because there's a timeline that's pressing, and then there's like actual emergencies where there's something wrong in the community, so I wasn't sure.
I could put something in there, you know, like unless of an emergency nature, um, or, you know, has some other detrimental impact if action isn't taken now, or some, you know, I can put something in along those lines.
Or like constraints of deadline or some, something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Critical deadlines or something.
Critical deadlines, yeah, okay, that, yeah, that, that would make it a little clearer, in my opinion, cause otherwise, when people hear emergency, that, I think their mind goes to other places.
Yeah.
Um, and then then under section C, um, item one F, I certainly agree with much of what you've written here for how we should format our documents, I'm just wondering if F is a little bit confusing and maybe a little excessive, if we have to document each subdivision with a date on the same, I don't know, I just, I worry that it could get really dense and unclear for people, so.
Well, I mean, I, and, I know that if you use, you know, if you use track changes in a Word document, that is retaining, you know, that's, in Word anyway, you can ascertain.
The problem is.
The data that change.
The problem is that when we format our packets, we convert everything to PDFs.
That's right.
And most of those functions don't translate.
Right, right.
That's one of the reasons why I was a bit persnickety about the rules for this, because if you look at this document, I, I think that it's pretty clear that what, what I'm suggesting is an addition and what I'm suggesting we delete, the other component of that is, we can't depend on color because as soon as you photocopy something, you lose the color, so it's okay, I think it's great to have color, but I think any document we create needs to be able, to be understood in, in black and white. I know this is, this feels very old school. Um, the other piece, uh, again, and I was pretty persnickety about F, I'll admit, after, I still have a little PTSD from the budget process and the, what felt like a bazillion revisions with no clear way to, to track the chronological order of things. So that, that, I just explained it, I'm just trying to sound defensive.
Sorry, Matthew, just had a quick question, would these dates, revision dates that we are listing, um, say there's like four or five of them, would they be in the title of the document, or would they footnote? Okay, okay.
I'm suggesting footnote, yeah, if that's not clear.
Yeah, that wasn't super clear to me, cause I was worried.
Yeah, I can add in, in the footnote there.
Oh, you, you did put it there, watermark or footnote on all, okay, it, it is in there, but I guess I just lost that as I was reading through it.
Um, you know, I personally would have even taken this first, but I didn't wanna try people's patience. I always put the date and I always put my initials, and I think that, that, that's kind of covered by um, C, one C, C one C, the creator's name and contact information. I'm gonna tell you now, if somebody hands me a document and it doesn't have that information on it, I'm giving it back. I'm just done, I think the budget disaster that we just lived through is all because we didn't have the discipline to affect something like this, and I don't even care what the final, you know, group decides as far as what these rules are, but I think we have to be fairly ruthless about, um, expecting, and I expect all the town staff, if they create a document for us, it's not formatted like this, it goes right back to them. Um, it's, I don't think it's asking a lot, it's just a ma- and you can, you can, I have blank, I have a blank Word document that's all set up and ready to go, that has all this stuff in there, and then anytime I start to write a new document, I just click on that and, and you're off, so I, I don't think we're asking a lot.
Um, Josh, what is your perception as someone who's had to create documents for council on, is this a heavy, is there a heavy lift?
I, no, I really think this is absolutely really ideal, um, if you have a template, certainly, if you could get me that, so I could distribute that to the department heads, so we're all dealing with the same format.
I would be happy.
And if we have a s- clear set of rules to follow, I think that there may be a little bit of a learning curve initially, but then it becomes second nature, and I think that this would also provide clarity for people who are workshopping documents, sending them back and forth to make sure that they're dealing with the correct copies and the correct edits, and they have the right one to submit.
Yeah.
I think that what you felt in budget has been felt by department heads, just in the jumble of paper and drafts and documents, and which one do I have? I think this process would definitely help clarify a lot of steps, and I think it would become second nature really easily too, so I think the heavy lift would be the first document, the second one would be just bang it out.
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful.
I guess, if things are done in Word, I would prefer, you know, the watermark draft, because it's impossible to miss. You know, you know you're looking at it, you don't have to look at the footer, if it's a watermark, it's.
I would need a tutorial on how to add a watermark.
Yeah, see, I think that, I mean, I think if it's on the document, there's a little bit of expectation that folks are gonna read. I think that, again, well, anyways, whatever the group decides, that's why I made it either.
I guess I could put it in the footnote, even if it wasn't a watermark.
That's where I tend to put, what you see here is what I would be inclined to.
And the footnote.
Yeah.
And, and that's basically what, what we see here in the, in the footer is what you're saying it should be.
I've kinda tried to model it with this document, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
I, those were the edits I had for section six oh two dot oh three, did anyone have another?
So, well, just, like, as a as an illustration of this, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but like the, the, um, self-storage unit ordinance that was in the packet, it's all shown as underlying, cause it's all proposed as new language in the ordinance, or, you know, that section of it.
Yep.
Um, but, like, there were changes from the draft we got in July, um, and so like, if those, you know, like, if I could, you know, cause I read through it pretty thoroughly in July, and, and if I could see, you know, be pointed out what the changes are from July, that would be helpful rather than it just being all.
I did ask about that one myself, and apparently, there was a lot of formatting challenges with that document, that, and they were unable to do what you're asking, cause I, I had a similar question, but, but that does, you know, this, we run into that a lot, where there's like formatting challenges from.
We do, I mean, you know, it, one of the things, again, can be our process, so if we looked at this document now and we're going through it and you've made suggestions, if the next time I presented this to you, everything that we've agreed upon in green was black text and everything that we agreed to strike out was missing, and then all you saw on here were the edits that we had today, that, that would be the way I would present the next version of this to you. Now, you're right, that wouldn't tell you what changed in the prior version.
Right.
But you would just be dealing with what was left to be discussed, and you wouldn't have all the other stuff that we'd already agreed on was okay.
Well, in a, in a Word doc, you can, um, you know, you can, uh, sort of hide the edits that you've made previously, or I think, so there's some, there's ways to do that, but.
Right, but in Word, it wouldn't turn to a PDF.
No, you know, but if, and I don't, I'm not saying I have all the answers, believe me, but if you go to print the document and then rather than choose print, you choose to turn it into a PDF, it might just display the new text, it might not display that hidden text. I'm not familiar enough to know how it would work, but could certainly try that.
Yeah, your, your, your approach that you outlined, it would be my preference, to say, you know, we went through it once, we've agreed on these changes, and these are the changes, these are the changes that we asked for in addition.
So the next, um, right now, all the things that you're suggesting me to change are in pink on my computer, but next time, all the green will be black, all the red will be gone, and that will be the new green or red will be the strikeout.
I mean, that makes sense to me.
And there's an ability to, if you did a save as a PDF for this tracked document, it does save it exactly with these colors in it, so if you had a need to like retain, here's what the original draft was, and here's what our first changes were, then you could still keep that in the archive somewhere, so that changes would still be visible even as you accepted all the changes and moved on to the next.
Well, yeah, I would keep, in other words, the, the, this draft of September seventh would still exist. And then what you would see is, at the bottom there, you're gonna see draft, today's date, and then the previous date. And then the previous date, and you could look for that other document if you wanted to see all of that. I think, I'm also thinking towards budget. I think when we get to budget, our budget page only, only has the most recent documents on it. If you want to see all the previous versions, there's another webpage behind that where you can go to your heart's content. But when someone lands on our budget page, they only ever see the most recent draft of any other, of any document.
It's essentially what we did with the revi- or Kyle did with the revised, um, doc, budget page that he created.
I mean, it just got completely out of control. I mean, even we were having trouble figuring out which one.
So I, it sounds like this is going to be a bit of an experiment, but are we all comfortable with this format? At least trying it out and seeing how it goes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It only takes four votes to change it.
Yeah. Okay, so is there, and there was, that was it from, I think, that section. Did you have other sections you had?
Uh, yeah, I, I, um, was looking at, uh, I was going to roll ahead to packet page thirty seven. So if you have, uh, changes on thirty five and thirty six.
I mentioned all my changes, so I don't know about others, but.
Uh, thirty seven, a line four, um, uh, let's see. Public does not need to be capitalized in sense, oh my god, I really went granular, sorry.
What was that, which?
It was, uh.
So A four starts on the previous page?
Uh, I think it's B four. I'm, I'm not finding where I.
I can do a search for public.
Yeah, it was, it, it seemed to me that it was capitalized and, and didn't need to be.
I can just do a search.
Yeah, and then, um, my next comment is on packet page thirty nine.
Anybody have anything between here and there?
Yeah, anybody else?
I do.
Okay.
This came out of our agreement Saturday, um, packet page thirty seven. Um, I would like, under D where it says the vice chair's responsibility, I would like to add E and just some wording about. All counselors will participate in the bi-weekly payroll and AP warrants on a rotating basis. To be determined after each June election.
Yeah, that would, that would.
So I was just going to throw that in there.
Yeah, good job.
That was my only thought there.
Yep.
You were on thirty nine, I think.
Yeah, uh, let's see, page thirty nine. Line one, under breach of council rules or orders. Oh, I, you know, you made a comment on this, Dan, and, and, uh, uh, this is, this is, uh. It reads, on a motion passed by the rest of the council, they be required to make satisfaction therefore, and shall not be allowed to vote or speak. Uh, until they have done so. And I, yeah, I just, my question was, what does it mean to make satisfaction therefore?
Whatever the council demands of the person today.
Yeah, it could be an apology, it could be, I don't know, public, you know, whatever.
Stocks.
I don't know. It's kind of weird, like, I mean, I, I thought.
Some form of public humiliation.
Yeah.
Marty, Marty has one on that statement.
Page thirty nine A, last word legalese, uh.
Oh, that's just my.
Yeah, that's just a note Dan made there, yeah.
He's going to take that out, that whole blue section.
I just wondered if people wanted me to just rework the whole thing, but I.
I think you should just leave it.
Okay.
I don't know what else you would say, but.
That was why I recommend.
Can include, but it's not limited to, public stocks, baking a cake, public apology.
Just put public humiliation.
Yeah, some sort of, it was a little weird, um.
Hold over, days gone by.
Uh, my next comment, next and last comment is on, uh, page, packet page forty one. And it has, this section has to do, uh, with council requests for staff time and legal opinions.
Yes.
And I, I, I just note that it has been our protocol to, uh, CC the town manager when we make a request of staff. And, and, uh, I mean, because there's stuff that comes up in our meetings that, where we make a request, but, but. I may, you know, reach out to Doug about something and, and, um, and I, I just think, I feel like that should be captured in, in this. Um, this is, oh, this is around council meetings, yeah, and workshops, so maybe it doesn't belong here, but.
For instance, my, my workshop question about the residential changes to commercials.
Right.
You know, I think that that request has to come to the council first to see if there's any interest. And then to the manager to decide, you know, we already hear that everybody's got more on their plate than they can do. So they're going to come back and tell us that, yeah, we can do this, but, you know, X, Y, or Z is going to have to go.
Yeah, right, and, and this is, um, rules of the Gray Town Council, so, I mean, the, the document overall, so. Um, I, it does seem to me that it might be worth just putting that in there, um, uh, but I don't, maybe it's a separate. Section or, or, I mean.
Well, that was a policy that Nate preferred, so. I, I hear what you're saying, but maybe the next town manager wouldn't want to be copied on everything, I mean. Maybe Josh doesn't want to be copied on it. I mean, I, I don't, I don't know.
Think Nate wanted to be copied on it, just in part for this reason, he wanted to make sure of that.
I understood his position. I'm, I'm just saying, if we put it in our rules and then we have a new town manager who feels differently, I suppose we can just amend them at the time, but.
I, I think it's a useful exercise, because it just keeps the town manager informed of what you're asking staff. And, and, and there have been councils in the past where staff have been abused, yeah.
I can always put like a number six, that when, when town council, well, maybe you won't want me to do this. When town council, when, when a counselor emails a member of staff, they always copy the manager.
Yeah, and I think the policy was on the, upon the first request. If like something, if like something was approved as a project.
So, the first request.
Yeah, you didn't need to be continually copied on everything.
And, yeah, now that.
And, yeah, and I.
The person's email from.
And I think for a new, I mean, it, it's not always a question of counselor abuse of staff. I mean, it could be just a new counselor not really understanding. Like what's appropriate or not, and, and it's an opportunity for the council member, I mean, for the, the town manager to step in at that point and say. Uh, you know, here's how I prefer you to do it or whatever, you know, to have a conversation about it.
So for newer first requests, always be sure to copy the town manager.
Before, uh, just as a thought, um, I don't know what the event would be, but in the event that there was an out of sorts town manager. That the council felt the need to talk to some staff directly to, you may want to put some bookroom in that so that if you had an information request, like is the town manager hitting you? That you should not want to direct through the town manager first to, in order to get candor from the plate.
If that happened, it would go to Krista, then then to John. Before that, before we had a HR director, that would have been.
Yeah.
Yes, perfect, oh, you're right.
Yeah.
But we would funnel all of our stuff to Krista or the chair.
Okay.
And then the chair would make the decision who to approach.
Perfect.
Because Krista also has access to Alyssa and Natalie.
Perfect.
So if I add, um. Counselors will always copy the manager on. On any initial request to staff?
Yeah, that's fine. And that's just some total of my edits.
Okay, thanks. Does anyone else have edits that we didn't already cover?
Nope.
No, okay. Dan, do you have everything you need to?
I think I do, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to vote, um, our motion as amended, so to review and act upon. Reaffirming the rules for town council meetings and workshops as amended, and then we won't have to revisit this again. Just a reminder.
Motion, right?
We did have a motion, yet you, you, uh, you made the motion and, yes, are you both okay with that?
Yep.
Um, and then, um, just a reminder, we need at least four of us to vote yay on this in order for it to pass.
Yep.
Um, okay, um, Matthew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
So I will still produce one document that shows tonight's edits. For everybody to just make sure I got it right.
Okay.
And then I'll produce a final document which I'll give to Josh.
And if you could also send me that draft, or if you have the template sorted out, that'd be great.
Yeah, so do the template, yeah, the template too, yep.
Okay, so we've already done what was old three, so we're on four, which is now. Now the numbering is back in order, so to review and, I need a motion to review and authorize joining the Maine Public Employees Retirement System, Maine PERS. Consolidated Participating Local District Plan. The town council has previously proposed. Offering special plan three C to its full-time firefighters and fire chiefs. And the town authorized an amount of eighty thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars. As part of the public safety pay and benefits retirement expense line for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. By vote during a town meeting called and held on September ninth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Okay, I'll do, uh, Marty and then Matthew. So that is starting on packet page.
Fifty.
Fifty, thank you.
Make sure it's forty nine.
Oh, is it forty nine?
Forty nine, all right, yep, forty, so forty nine is the sample wording we got from the Maine PERS staff. Um, just as a start, to start our, how we were rewriting our order. Um, we are voting on pa- what's written on packet page fifty. Um, which is an order authorizing the town to join Maine PERS Consolidated Participating Local District Plan. It outlines. Um, what I just noted in the motion of the cost, and the reason we, we voted to approve it at the town meeting on September ninth. Um, it has the effective date and, um, full-time firefighters need to work, uh, at least forty-two hours per week. It does not include part-time, seasonal, or temporary employees, and does not include elected officials. In this benefit. Uh, fire chiefs, uh, work in forty hours per week, but they're kind of listed sep- as a separate. It says full-time firefighters and then it's fire chiefs, so that covers their hours worked. I did notice this document has an effective date of October first, twenty twenty-three on all lines except. In the second paragraph where, um, it ends with October second, twenty twenty-three, so. I think we need to amend our motion to be effective October first and all. I don't know if we can just, when we're signing this document, cross that out, if you.
I think that we could cross it out and then all initial underneath. And, you know, you may have to present us with a clean copy, but that should do it for.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I've, that's what you would do on a check or something else.
Yeah, or, right, if you're doing a mortgage or something like that, yep.
So, did anyone have any discussion points around this?
I, I have one other question.
Hey, Ann.
Um, I noticed the, the date discrepancy, but also, um, in the, in the sample document, it said forty hours a week. And, and here, and then in the, the draft that we're looking at, it says forty-two, and I, I just thought that was a weird number. I mean, how does that? I mean, it could be something to do with the, the length of their shifts or something. I was trying to figure out how they get to forty-two.
I had a note from John that indicated that a full-time firefighter typically works in Gray, typically works forty-two hours a week. And that the chiefs work forty hours a week.
Forty-two is the, the work schedule that I had when I was a firefighter, we worked a forty-two hour week. We worked a forty-hour week, but our schedule was forty-two hours, so they gave us back. They gave us back two hours a week, but it, it worked out. Because, and forty-two goes into one sixty-eight four times. That's so, also part of it.
What's, one sixty-eight is in the month?
A week.
A week, oh.
Yeah, so the note I had from John just says, basically, it says, note that firefighters work a forty-two hour week and the fire chiefs work a forty-hour week, that's what.
Does that mean we pay them for forty-two hours a week and they actually work forty? I'm just sort of, I don't understand this.
I'm not really sure.
Uh, I would say they're, they're paid for, for forty hours a week.
And they work forty-two?
We have a brave hand in the sub chat.
Okay, maybe somebody can enlighten me.
Yeah, is it, yeah, Mr. Dunbar, yeah, you go ahead.
Hey, good evening, Rick Dunbar, uh, full-time lieutenant and also the union president. So with that, we work, um, an average of eighty-four hours in a two-week period. So that works out that some weeks we'll work, uh, three shifts, and then some weeks, uh, some pay periods we work five shifts. So it averages out to eighty-four, and that's where you get the forty-two hours.
Based on a two-week pay period.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful.
I'm glad you were on tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, anytime.
Yeah. Anyone else have comments or questions?
So we just have to change that second whereas date to first.
The first, yeah.
Okay. Nope, I have no further questions.
That was it for me.
Okay, so we can go to a vote. Um, Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
And don't run out at the end of the meeting, because you have a document to say.
Yeah, we do have to say.
Right, good point, thanks.
Yeah, and I just, um. Hope, uh, the town certainly recognizes all the work and effort our fire rescue staff does, and I'm sure they do, because they've approved this, um. Um, new retirement option, so.
It is appreciated.
It's much appreciated.
And I was glad to see that there was so much community support in the end to, to include this too.
Yep.
Okay, um, next up is to review and act upon authorizing the interim town manager to se- secure a contract with a consultant. Slash search firm to fill the town manager vacancy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Do we need to fill in the?
We'll amend it.
Yeah, so we'll amend this to name, um, both the contract, uh, contractor and then an amount. Which might be a little tricky with some of these proposals. Does anyone have any thoughts? And we did talk about this at the workshop preceding this meeting at length. We had four proposals, um, from a pretty wide variety of, and, um, both individuals and consulting firms. We had two proposals from out-of-state firms, one from the Boston area and one that's a national firm based out of Texas. We had a proposal from Eaton Peabody Consulting Group out of Augusta, who the town has used before, um. Um, partic- in particular, Don Garrish leads that, um, team. And then we had a, um, proposal for, as a cons, contract employee from Mitch Berkowitz, a local great resident and former town manager. Who's a great resource for the town. It was a tough decision. I think we were all leaning, um, towards having a local firm with experience with both the community. And also the, just Maine in general. In particular, um, the SGR proposal we had did have some compelling points in terms of its, um, ability to do outreach. But I think we all, um, decided that we would prefer to have somebody with a definite local tie. So we were leaning towards Eaton Peabody and Mr. Garrish. Did anyone have any additional thoughts? Go ahead, Dan.
No, I think that was a good lead-in. Thanks for sharing that. I think the two national firms. Um, besides just maybe not understanding, um, our community, our needs. Were also significantly more expensive than the other two. You know, one was in the vicinity of twenty-five thousand dollars and the other was forty thousand dollars. We have had experience with Eaton Peabody before, our last town council search, um, we hired them to help us. Um, that was, you know, uh, uh.
Good experience.
Yeah, it was a very positive experience, so, just some more background info.
You have a question? So, should we, like, in choosing, so. We're going to choose, we're going to fill in the blank for the firm and, or person. And then do we want to have a number, like not to be exceeded, basically?
Yeah, so that's the way it's phrased right now, not to exceed, at a cost not to exceed. So Eaton Peabody's fee was a flat fee of seventy-five hundred dollars. Plus, um, direct expenses such as mileage, printing, advertising, and other reasonable expenses incurred. We've had quotes from other firms that a typical advertisement costs anywhere from two thousand to three thousand dollars, so. I think we need to add on at least a couple of those to account for the need for advertisements, um. So, if we did, I don't know if people want to do another five thousand or six thousand beyond the seventy-five hundred for advertising.
Well, I think if we made it, uh, not to exceed ten thousand.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
That would do that, and, um, you know, that was, both, both of the, I'll call them. Local, uh, proposals were, uh, pretty close monetarily.
Mm-hmm, they were. My concern with setting it at ten thousand is that really would only allow for one advertisement. And there's a chance we might need to do more than one.
And if we, um, wanted to advertise outside of Maine and, and do more throughout New England, for example, I mean, I, I, I just don't know what the cost of that would be. So, um, I, I would go a little higher myself.
I know that when we previously discussed this and Mr. Garrish was here. He did say, you know, there was a significant range in ads depending on how far we searched. So I think, uh, because we are looking. on how far we searched. Um, so I think, uh, because we are looking, I think to sort of stay in the, you know, northern New England or New England area, uh, it's, it's probably gonna be the lesser of that. Um, I guess what would people propose if they want it to be more than the ten thousand?
I might, I might say fifteen, just cause it would give us some wiggle room. I mean, it's, it's not like we're definitely gonna spend that money. It's just, it's just so that it, if we have to come back to it again, it's not gonna require us to vote again on additional funds.
Yeah, I, I guess I don't have a problem with voting again on additional funds if we, if we need additional funds.
Well, you twisted that, would it, we're under a significant time constraint with this, so I just, I, I would hesitate to tie.
It could add two or three weeks.
Right funds to any kind of need to vote, yeah.
I mean, I'd be comfortable if you, if we said, you know, for ten thousand dollars with a contingency of five thousand more, total of fifteen.
If we need to re-advertise or something like that.
If there's, yeah.
Or to extend the advertising or something.
Yep, or if the first round fails or something like that.
I'd be comfortable.
Yeah, we could do, I think we could probably amend that. So, so we would rephrase it to say, with, you know, note the contractor, and then for the recruitment of a new town manager, a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars with a contingency of five thousand? With an additional contingency.
Yeah. And that gives us, you know, we have the goal, but we have the, and I think for someone looking in on the process, too, that would help them kind of understand.
Anything else, please?
Why we've set that amount.
Yep. That sounds good.
Okay, so, Dan, you had, you had made the motion, Anne, you seconded, and are you both comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm just gonna read it out loud for the record. So, um, the proposed motion is, um, ordered the Gray Town Council authorizes the interim manager to secure a professional services contract with Eaton Peabody Consulting Group for the recruitment of a new town manager at a cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars with an additional contingency of five thousand dollars as needed. Okay.
So moved, yeah.
Yep. Um, Anne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
No.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Next up.
Just to, to finish up on that, but, um, so will Josh then sort of, or will John respond to the, to the people who submitted?
Well, John was, yeah, John was kind, um, managing all the proposals. Is that who you'd like to follow, follow up, or who, how would you like, what would you like to do?
I'm happy to give the initial call to Eaton Peabody and Don, and to say, last night, the council agreed to hire you for this firm, and definitely, I think, yeah, in the security, I think that John definitely has a lot on his plate right now, so I think I can help get this, get the follow-up.
Yeah, we should also.
Will we contact the other?
Right, that's what I was gonna say. We should notify the other, um, firms that we.
They weren't selected.
That they weren't selected, yeah.
Thank them for their proposals.
I'm sure Texas will be very sad to hear that.
Yeah, I know. Particularly Mitch, I know, he's, um, heavily involved in our community, so. Um. Go ahead, Dan.
When we, just a point of information, when we're doing the bond next, is that correct?
We were doing the library generator, which Mo has been waiting patiently online, so we should definitely do that next.
Yep.
Yeah, we should move this one up, too.
Getting ahead of myself.
All areas.
So, next up, I'm looking for, um, a motion to review and act upon approving the Gray Public Library Generator Electrical Construction Project.
So moved.
Second.
Um, Mo, do you wanna just give us, thank you for waiting this evening. Do you wanna just give us a quick, um, overview of what we're looking at tonight?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mo Russo, Director of Buildings and Grounds. Um, so this is part of the, um, generator project for the library, uh, which the town received a EMIG grant for. Um, back around August seventh, we received a generator which was purchased, or which was ordered, um, just about a ye- over a year ago. Um, so this is the next phase of the project, is where we, uh, installed the electrical work between the library and the generator, uh, which gets us closer to having the building, um, be fully supported, um, during a power outage. Um, we sent this out, uh, we set up a RFP for this, um, and solicited bids from four different contractors, as well as posting it to the website and the Facebook page. Um, we only had one bidder for the project, which was MacIver Electrical out of Briston, um, and they bid, um, I believe it was seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
Thank you, Mo. Um, does anyone have any questions on this? Um, it's a little disappointing, we only had one bid, but it seems to be the story, uh, lately with most of our RFPs. Um, it seemed like a reasonable contract, however. Does anyone?
I just had a quick question. And so is that within the, the parameters of what you were projecting, Mo?
It is. It's actually, um, probably a little bit lower than I was expecting it to come in at, so, which is good.
I, I would just add, for folks that don't have the benefit of the packet, that this firm also seems to have a fair bit of experience in this particular line where they've installed these kinds of generators for other communities and businesses, so. Um, it sounds like even though we only got the one, Mo, you got a good one out of the, the.
They are. They actually installed the, the electrical construction for the, uh, generator at Public Safety when we did that two years ago, as well as for the panel building at the same time, so.
Okay, um, so the total amount we would be awarding, um, would be seventeen thousand five hundred thirty, is that right?
That's correct.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I had it right.
Yep.
Okay, so we would be amending the motion to read, uh, the Gray Town Council awards the contract for the Gray Public Library Generator Electrical, Electrical Construction Project Contract to MacIver Electric, and grants authority to the interim town manager to enter into a contract for this work not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred thirty dollars. So, um, Matthew, you made the motion. Are you comfortable with that? Marty, are you comfortable?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Matthew, how do you vote?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Mo, thank you very much for hanging on. I know I missed, uh, moving you up in the agenda earlier, so.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Thanks, Mo.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you as well.
Actually, when we look at our agenda, just not to get too far off the subject, but maybe that's, under adjustments to the agenda, uh, uh, we can add like a little note about what might go there and just put staff waiting to.
Staff waiting to talk, yeah.
To, to, yeah.
Yeah.
As a prompt.
I'm, I'm willing to take a crack at the agenda, just the, the blank format, if people are, are okay with that, based on what we've talked about.
Oh, okay, yeah, you wanna edit the, like, for a template?
Yeah, just a template.
Yeah, that would be fine. I don't know, John might have a working template, cause I, usually I send him, like, kind of bulleted points on what I'm, I'm expecting, and then he puts it into this more formal format here, so you might wanna check with him about the te- whatever template he has already. Okay, so next on the agenda is, um, we, we were considering a request for an exemption.
Yes.
A disabled veteran excise tax exemption for Gray resident, uh, Dennis M. Davis. Um, and actually, um, if you'll note in the packet, there was a law passed in Maine which gives, um, veterans who are classified as permanently disabled access to, um, an exemption from their motor, motor vehicle excise tax due to their disability rating. Um, this is a new law that, which we're just learning, um, the details about. Apparently, there's still some rulemaking going on.
So, are you sort of doing a point of information now?
I am, I suppose I should take a vote.
Well, I was gonna make a motion to table it.
Yeah, we, uh, that was where I was getting, so that we were, we need a motion to table it, and I was trying to give background. But why don't, why don't we take the motion, then I'll continue with what I was saying. Um, so I am looking for a motion to table this, and I will get into why in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, yeah, so, there's still some, as I noted, this, this, um, law went into effect recently, and the, the state is still doing some rulemaking, um, around how it actually needs to be implemented. There's some confusion about what type of plate the veterans actually need to have in order to process an exemption. Um, we've heard different response, we've heard responses from the BMV, um, which are different than the, um, Veterans Affairs, uh, Office, so we're trying to work that out and understand how, um, who exactly would be eligible for an exemption. And then the other thing is, the law does not particu- uh, does not articulate that reimbursement should be issued for those that have already, um, paid, um, for their, um, taxes, even if they do have a disabled veteran status. So I have a memo from the, uh, Finance Director basically outlining this, and I just was gonna read that into the record. So this is from Justine Hutchings, our Finance Director, regarding the exemption for Mr. Davis and any potential applicants who might, um, come forward to seek a reimbursement. Following a discussion had at the Gray Council Retreat on September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and given the inconsistent guidance that the town has received from Maine BMV regarding conditions for granting the vehicle excise tax exemption for certain disabled veterans, we are unable to implement reimbursements at this time. Once the town of Gray has received solid and consistent guidance on specific eligibility requirements, the topic of reimbursement will be revisited. So I just wanna extend my apologies to Mr. Davis, cause we proceeded with, um, this reimbursement request before we had, um, accurate guidance from the state. Um, and as noted in this memo from our Finance Director, we certainly will be revisiting the topic of reimbursements, but we're not prepared to do so at this time, cause we don't have consistent rules in place for everybody who might come forward after you. Um.
Think you, if I could, uh.
Yep.
We also aren't certain who, um, lives in Gray that may also qualify. And, and that was one of our questions, too, was, um, it, you know, is there a way for us to get a definitive list so that people can be alerted? But that also requires the rules get sorted out before we can act on, on any of those things. Um, the goal is, I, we, you know, we wanna straighten it out.
Mm-hmm.
Clearly, um, you know, follow the rules, whatever those turn out to be.
Right. And Justine will be reaching out to Mr. Davis and others that have, um, inquired about reimbursements at this time, just to give them an update. Anyone else have thoughts on this tabled? So, we do, we do need to vote on the tabling, right? Yeah. So, um, Anne?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Just a point of information.
Sure.
A question to you, cause the, I was thinking, in thinking about the agenda, one of the things I was thinking about is to have a section on sort of just tabled motions. Um, are you just gonna keep a list? I mean, it's sort of goes out into the netherworld that we've got this tabled motion, and how do we track that?
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, I mean, I think in the past, it was just, the chair just tracked things like that. I, I mean, the shorts, the self-storage, uh, unit ordinances, we have de- definite dates. We're gonna be revisiting that already, but the, uh, things like this that are more, um, we don't have anything firm in, in the books, cause we're waiting for the state to get back to us. Yeah, that is a bit trickier, but I don't know, we could perhaps have, maybe we could have a, since we're using Teams, we could keep a list of tabled items in there.
I was thinking at the end of the agenda, we could just have almost like an appendix, you know, where we could just keep track of the list of items that are tabled, if there are any, and just have the date it was tabled and, and what it was.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be open for that.
And it would just always hang on back of the list as a reminder to us that we have that work to do and.
That would benefit me.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we could pull from that appendix to add to the agenda at any time.
I would think that we could, sure.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Well, I'm just, so, I mean, what if, I don't know, I'm just thinking, ta- tabling something, and there's no requirement that it be revisited, if it's tabled necessarily.
Yeah, there are times when we table something and intend to not revisit it again.
Right. And, and so, I'm just worried we'd have this long list of things that we don't really have any intention of taking up again.
If the, yeah, if there's no intention on revisiting it, I don't see why we would need to put it on the list. I'm just talking about keeping track of things that do have an intention to come back to.
So would that be part of the motion, or how would we differentiate between, you know, things we want on the list and, and things we don't necessarily?
It's part of the discussion.
Is that something we would add to our council rules? I mean, just to have practice, I don't know, that may be more than we need.
I think that, I don't think we would need to put it in there, because I think that the version of Robert's Rules that we use takes care of that, but I can look into that more if you want.
Yeah, sure, since you're amending the rules anyway.
Okay. Yep, I can look into that, cause there is a, there is a mechanism there, but I can't recall it.
Okay. Yeah, perhaps Robert's Rules has some sort of suggestion for things that have been tabled, like, what, how, you know, how they get tracked or accounted for, rather.
We did change in the, um, in the council rules, it used to say the most up-to-date version of Robert Rules, and, and that language we did change in this draft, that says, um, the current version being used. So we don't necessarily always have to be using the, the most up-to-date version, and that's pretty common. Not everybody runs out and buys the latest and greatest, and we use such a small fraction of Robert's Rules.
Yeah.
It, you know, that, the book is like that, but we can fit all our stuff on one, one or two pages. I don't propose that we delve into Robert's Rules anymore than we have to, to do business.
So is it, I, I don't recall, from the rules, does it specify what version we're using, or how do we find out?
Now it just says the one that we're currently using.
Right, but how, how would somebody find out what the one is that we're currently using?
They just inquire. I mean, w- we don't, with the, literally, we have, I think, a four-page Robert's Rules document that we use. I can change that language if people think it needs to be something other than that, but.
Well, it.
Actually, those pages do have dates on them, but.
Okay, so we do have four pages, and, and that's what we're, so that, basically, that's what we're using, is those four pages.
Yeah. I was gonna put them in the rules before last spring, but we were waived off that by the town's attorney.
Mm-hmm. And, and where would, where would one find those four pages?
They're on the town council's website.
Okay. I know, I, I've seen them, I just.
Yeah, if you go to the town website and you go to the town council page, you'll see them listed on the left-hand side for reference.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the next item? Yep. So I'm looking for a motion to review and act upon approving the appointment of Bradley Fogg as a regular member of the Community Television Advisory Committee with a term expiring on August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Um, I wanna just thank Mr. Fogg for continuing to volunteer for this committee. He's, he's a current, uh, member and an active member, and, um, I know that, um, he's certainly a valuable voice, um, for the committee. Does anyone have any comments, or, go ahead, Dan?
Yeah, uh, um, Brad has actually been the common thread with our adventure in cable TV, since it really was cable TV and the only choice we had. Um, and, you know, there was a time when he was the one that would be sitting in the control booth, recording our meetings, and, uh, he has dedicated a lot of time and effort, uh, to try and make, um, the town government as accessible as anybody else that I know of, and I, I appreciate that effort, and I know a lot of other people do, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay, um, Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next up is a proclamation to review and act upon approving the National Suicide Prevention Action Month proclamation. Do I have the motion?
Hope so moved.
Second.
So, basically, this is something I think Sandy, former, former Chair Sandy Carter spearheaded on her time in council. She had a, someone close to her that had, had passed away due to suicide, and this is just a way for the town to recognize and honor the people who've, who've passed away from suicide, and also the family members involved, and also just a, a way to ensure that we're recognizing those individuals, but also the effort to educate and create a support system for people that are in need in the community. I will note that I think John edited the date on this, but we didn't, the counselors listed or need to be edited.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, John, if we, if we approve, or John, Josh, if we approve this tonight, if we could maybe sign it at a later date-
Absolutely.
With a copy that their names improve, um, edited. I don't think we need to edit the motion, just because our names are listed wrong on the proclamation. Do, do others?
I would agree.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
It's not part of the motion.
Did anyone else have any thoughts or comments on this proclamation?
No, I think it's, I mean, I know that now that I've retired from the school system, I'm not participating anymore, but the issue had grown to the point where it had become a annual educational component, sort of a review that all staff had to go through. It is, you know, one of the most tragic experiences I think anybody probably can go through. And so, I think it's worth definitely to spend a few minutes on just encouraging anybody who feels they're in a situation where suicide feels like a solution to your problems, to know that there are other options, and there are a lot of other people out there that can be looked to for support now more than ever, and I think that's a, that's a good thing.
Thank you, Dan. Yeah, that's, I wanted to, yeah, reiterate that, you know, if you feel like you need help, there are resources out there. You can call two-one-one for support, and I think there's also a dedicated crisis line specifically for suicide prevention. So, there, yeah, please reach out if you're having feelings of despair.
I mean, it's longstanding, when I was a kid, when I was in high school, I worked on a suicide drug hotline for a number of years, and, you know, it's a, unfortunately, it's a threat that's, you know, common in a lot of societies, and, you know, I'm not sure you can ever eradicate something like this, but you can constantly call attention to it to try and minimize it just as much as possible. I mean, especially when you look at, you know, the numbers that are in this proclamation, you know, the, the idea that forty-six thousand people a year die by suicide is, you know, more, I think, now than die in motor vehicle accidents in the United States, so, you know, it's definitely worth paying attention to.
For sure. Okay, I'm gonna take a vote unless anyone has additional thoughts. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, next up is the report from the council chair.
Oh, actually, we have one more action.
Oh, we did? Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, that's good, right.
We, we did, and I have that written down on a different page, which is why I'm not, um, yes, so we had an, an action item number ten. We actually have two more things. Number ten was the, the bond authorization-
Yep.
Um, which you'll find on packet page one hundred twenty-eight. And I'm not really sure what the best language is for that. I, I-
Actually, my suggestion was to, if you look at the bond, is to, I, I'm willing to do it if you want, is to read the first three paragraphs and then refer to the council packet.
Okay. Well, first, let's take a motion to, um, well, like, do we need to read that first before we even have a motion?
You want me to do that?
Yeah, if you would.
So, the Town of Gray, Town of Gray Town Council order authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds. Whereas at a town meeting referendum election on September ninth, twenty twenty-three, the voters of the Town of Gray authorize the issuance of up to one million dollars in general obligation bonds or notes of the town to pay and/or reimburse the cost of improvements to the septic system that services multiple buildings on the penal complex, and the construction of additional public facilities and programmatic space for the town recreation department and childcare program in the manual arts building, parentheses, the projects. And whereas pursuant to such town meeting authorization, the town council desires to authorize and provide for the details of the issuance of up to one million dollars of general obligation bonds of the town in order to finance the projects, together with the capitalized interest on the bonds and notes in anticipation of the bonds for a period of up to three years. Now, therefore, be it voted and ordered by the town council of the Town of Gray, Maine, as follows, on pages one twenty-eight to one thirty of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting packet.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have a motion to, um,
So moved.
Accept that as read?
I'll second.
Um, I think the, what Dan read is, pretty clearly outlines what we're voting on, but I just want to reiterate that this million-dollar bond at a five-point-zero-five percent interest rate, which is what the terms were in an August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three letter we received from Andrew Scoggin Bank, was approved by those in attendance at the September ninth, twenty twenty-three town meeting. And so, we are just issuing, authorizing this issuance of the bonds as it has already been approved by voters. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, just a couple of other points. You heard that this is a three-year bond. This bond could have been much longer. Certainly, a project like a septic system has-
Point of information, I think it's a five-year bond.
Oh, pardon me.
Yeah, not a three-year bond.
Yeah.
Period of up to three years in the second paragraph, but okay, I don't know if that-
Where does it say that?
Let, the last sent, last line of the second paragraph. And notes in anticipation of bonds for a period of up to three years.
Yeah, I thought it was five years.
It is, it's a five-year bond.
Yeah.
So, do we need to amend the, I can do that.
Can we amend that?
Yeah, we can amend that.
Do you have the terms there, Josh? I mean, I know that in the letter, I have the letter.
While we're looking for that, what I was going to say is, one of the reasons, again, this, parts of the septic system are well over fifty years old. One of the reasons why we selected a shorter-term bond than, say, a ten- or twenty-year bond, was in fact to limit the amount of interest that we're paying on the overall project. So, while our bond payments have been going down, and were slated to go down this year, as we talked about at the town meeting, this will keep them from going down at the same rate that they were currently doing, but it will allow us to pay this bond off more quickly, and so incur less interest. The other piece that I think it's important to note is the up to one million dollars. So, if the project is less than a million dollars, we'll only expend what's needed for the project. And there's nothing that prevents us from paying the bond off early, and any money that's left over will just go back into paying the bond.
That's right. Sorry, I'm just looking through my email. I, I know I have the letter from August fourteenth somewhere, but I'm just having a hard time.
That's all right, there's no, I move, we take a five-minute break.
Yeah, that, I, I, let's second that. Yeah, do we need to vote? Do we need to vote on a break?
Um, yeah, I think we do, actually.
Do we?
Yeah, I think we do. I'm in favor.
I'm in favor, Dan. Let's just all in favor.
Yes.
Any objection to you, they are my consent.
Yeah, we'll be back in, at eight, uh, well, my math is bad here, eight forty-eight P.M.
And I probably should have said recent. Here, I'll say for a period of up to or not to exceed five years, as also mentioned in section eleven. Okay, for a period of up to or no more, or no longer than, no longer than. And if Alyssa has a problem with this, we can always stick it on another agenda. We're no longer than five years.
I just don't, I don't know, this used to be final before we can sign it.
Well, I think you could check with Alyssa to see if how we've amended it is okay, and if it is, then we're, we're also-
All right, thank, thank you everyone for hanging with us. We just found some incorrect language in this or, uh, this order we were looking at to authorize the bond. So, we are just going to make an amendment to the language that Councilor McGuire is gonna outline in a minute to align with the obligation bond that we have listed on official documentation with, and it lists a maturity date of September twenty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
So, just to be on the, up and up, how about if I just reread it?
You're gonna reread it? Okay, as, yeah, sure.
Just to, and then we'll have it in the record?
Yeah.
So, I agree to amend my previous motion so that it reads, "The Town of Gray Town Council order authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds. Whereas at a town meeting referendum election on September ninth, twenty twenty-three, the voters of the Town of Gray authorize the issuance of up to one million dollars in general obligation bonds or notes of the town to pay and/or reimburse the cost of improvements to the septic system that services multiple buildings on the penal complex, and the construction of additional public facilities and programmatic space for the town recreation department and childcare program in the manual arts building, parentheses, the project, close parentheses. And whereas pursuant to such town meeting authorization, the town council desires to authorize and provide for the details of the issuance of up to one million dollars of general obligation bonds of the town in the order, in order to finance the projects, together with capitalized interest on the bonds and notes in anticipation of the bonds for a period of up to or no longer than five years, as noted here and in section eleven. Now, therefore, it be voted and ordered by the town council of the Town of Gray, Maine, as follows, on pages one twenty-eight through one thirty of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting packet as amended."
Okay. Matthew, you had the motion, and Ann, you had the second. Are you okay with those amendments?
Yes.
Okay, let's take a vote, and then we will make sure that this amended version is noted for our lawyer, Alyssa Jensen-Baird. Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
And I think we'll also have to ask that the meeting packet that's on the web be amended to contain this language. So, what I can do is I can just take this document that I've amended and send it to whoever, John or Kyle, whoever's gonna do that, and they can just attach the, you know, they can-
They might have to reform, like, I think it might be one giant PDF, so they might have to pop it back in.
Yeah, cut out the original one and paste this one in its place.
Do you wanna be, you're gonna be in charge of that?
Sure, I'll do it. I mean, I've got it here on my computer, so I might as well.
If I do that too, I'll make sure to get it up.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll just send it to you.
That's great, yeah, I'll get that off to Alyssa.
I'll do, I can do that tomorrow. I'll do, I can do that tomorrow. Note to self.
Okay, and so then we also had an adjustment to the agenda for item number twelve, eleven, where we're going to review and act upon approving the appointment of Melinda Sheehy as a regular member of the Planning Board with a term expiring on August 31st, 2026. You had an email from Councilor McGuire in your inboxes that had.
So moved.
Yeah, sorry, we went going on, sorry.
Nope, it's okay. It's a team sport.
Yeah.
Council is a team sport.
I'm jumping ahead to the explanation, sorry. Okay, so you have Melinda's application from, in your email from Dan. It was sent on Sunday, September 17th, at 11:36 a.m. It's just our standard application.
Yep.
Dan, did you wanna talk about?
Yes, I did. Melinda has been, she served out a, completed a term, which is kind of how we got in the pickle. We sort of missed the fact that it wasn't a three-year term. She, by occupation, is a lawyer. She has served on the Town and Quorum's Planning Board and on their ZBA. She has a lot of experience and a lot of interest in the community, has brought all of that to the Planning Board and has really just been willing to jump right in and help out. I will say that our Planning Board now is down to the minimum number of members. There are only three. Typically, we like the Planning Board to be staffed with five. I'm not sure we've had five members on the Planning Board since I've been a counselor. I think a lot of people, when they hear about Planning Board, they feel that it's a pretty daunting undertaking. Planning Board is also a team sport, like the council. It's not like you have to be a town planner in order to be on the board. Our town planner is, is the person who works with the Planning Board to make sure they have all the information that they, she cites all of the ordinances that apply to any decision that they make. We all depend on each other for information and knowledge, so it can sometimes be contentious. That is true. But, you know, we've done the comp plan. We've heard from a lot of people in a lot of different venues about how they want our town to be a particular way now and into the future. And I can tell you that the Planning Board is probably the most important committee that we have that will assure that we get the kind of community we want in the future. Their quasi judicial board that is created by the council, but they are obligated by state statute to work independently from the council. So it is, uh, it is a big undertaking, but it's a critically important job in town. If there is anybody who even thinks, we also have two alternate positions that are available for the Planning Board. The alternates usually go to people who are interested in being on the Planning Board, but maybe don't feel prepared to be in the decision-making seat, and it gives them an opportunity to learn ahead of time. And if there is anyone out there who even is curious about being on the Planning Board, my contact information is on the website. Please feel free to give me a call. I'd be more than happy to explain how it all works. And I wanna thank Melinda for submitting an application and continuing on on the Planning Board.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Melinda, very much.
That's my PSA for the, for the Planning Board.
Okay, we'll just go to vote. Ann?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Okay, that does conclude action items, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now, as the report from the Council Chair. First, I just wanna thank everyone from the public and the residents who came out to the September 9th Town Meeting where we were able to approve the FY '24 budget. I know that there was a lot of questions around what we were funding, and I hope that the Town Meeting provided an opportunity for folks to become a little more educated and up to speed on what the town is proposing with their property taxes. Also, I wanna remind everyone that due to the timeline of the budget passing and failing in June and then waiting for this Town Meeting in September to have it passed, taxes, the tax due dates have been pushed out, so taxes are now due on October 23rd of this year. Tax bills will be in the mail as of next week, September 25th, so you should be receiving those. And they are also currently available on our website, so if you want to get a head start on your mail, you could go on the website to look up your individual tax bill between now and then. I wanna remind councilors that we have a workshop we scheduled for September 25th, Monday, at 5 o'clock, where we'll be reviewing amendments to LD, rather, we're reviewing amendments to our zoning ordinances to align with the newly passed LD 2003 law that allows for increased density and types of housing in town.
That's the 25th?
25th, yeah, 5 o'clock. Also, we decided at our retreat to have a training on teams with Kyle, and I believe you all have an email from Kyle just inquiring about availability of dates. If you could just reply to his survey, so we can firm up a time for that. On October 16th, Ann and Josh and I will be meeting with the MDOT and the Principal Group to discuss next steps on memorandum of understanding with the DOT and hopefully to finalize that, so we can move forward with an application for the federal raise grant to support the infrastructure work that we're looking to do. I wanna thank all the councilors and Josh and Doug and Justine for coming out and taking the time Saturday for our very long but productive council retreat. I think we got a lot done and looking forward to our goals that we've developed for the year. I'll be sending around notes with the SMART goals that we identified for councilors to fill out those sheets, and also noting any parking lot items we, we noted that Ann was kind enough to take notes for. And then I'll be updating teams with inputs that we decided for priorities. What else here? Lauren is applying for reimbursement for the funds we've distributed for the property tax stabilization law that was active last year and this year. I think that deadline is November, and so hopefully we'll be getting some reimbursement from the state to account for the funds we had to, the funds we lost in property taxes due to that law. And I just wanna remind everyone that law was repealed and will no longer be active after this fiscal year. I'm also looking to see if we'd like to hold any additional workshops in October. I'm just making it a point to have this hour before our meetings, as we've done in years past. But we certainly have a lot to talk about, particularly as we're gonna be embarking on a town manager search. Do we wanna reserve some dates now, or maybe check in again on the 25th to see where we're at or what we might need? Go ahead, Dan.
I'd say now. I mean, we've got work. I think it, just make it the norm that.
Okay.
6 o'clock, we're, we're gonna do a workshop.
So, in order to post, as soon as we could do it, what's today, the 19th? As soon as we could do it is really, I'm, I'm not gonna say next week, 'cause there's a lot going on, but, yeah, we could do stuff the first week of October or thereafter.
Yep.
Generally, for me, Wednesdays and Thursdays are, are better for workshops. I can sometimes do Mondays, but they're a little bit.
What about the night of the?
The, yeah, of the council meeting.
The 3rd.
Well, yeah, I'm always gonna have a 6 o'clock for that, but I'm talking about like additional, yeah, we usually do one or two additional meetings beyond those nights, and I was just.
I'm sorry, what were those day, you said Wednesday?
So generally, you know, Tuesdays when we don't have council meetings are fine, and then Wednesdays and Thursdays are usually best for me.
With enough notice that those days would work for me, I think.
Okay, what about, what about the 10th, like, would 5 o'clock be good for people?
October 10th.
For an hour, or, I don't know, how long?
I don't know, maybe, I don't know, hour and a half, 90 minutes, yeah.
Six is, 6 or 5:30 is better for me.
Okay.
5:30 to 7.
Do 5:30 to 7, is that okay?
I, I think I may have another meeting that night, but if I, I might, you know, I just might have to exit like 6:45, but.
Well, we could do a different day. What, um, how about the, how about the 12th, since that's a late day for staff anyway?
Play, I get Planning Board at 7.
Okay, so not that day. What about Wednesday, the 11th?
I have open space, sorry. I, I mean, I think, let's just do it on the Tuesday and, and, and I, it's, I mean, I, I'm sort of saving Tuesday and Thursday that week. We haven't confirmed that meeting, so.
6:45 only means the last 15 minutes.
Right, I'm, I'm happy to exit.
Okay, so 5:30 on the 10th?
Yeah.
Okay, do we wanna do one more, or just leave it at that?
The more we do now, the better it will be for me.
Okay.
Personally.
Yeah, I'm not, that following week, the 16th's really bad for me, so I would be looking at either the 2nd or last week of October, though I will say the Monday, the 30th, is my daughter's birthday, and the 31st is Halloween, so those are sorta out for me.
Ooh, a Halloween birthday.
Yeah.
Is that 5:30 on the?
The 10th, yeah, so, I mean, we could do the, um, do you wanna do the 26th?
26th, if I can participate remotely.
That's fine with me.
I might have to be remote as well, but I think I could do that. But starting when?
We could do 5:30, since that works for me.
Yeah, I, I.
No?
That's all right, I mean, Thursdays are a little hard for me, but.
Do you wanna do Wednesday? I was just trying to do a later day for staff.
I have a conflict that night. Tuesday I could do, though. But you said Monday and Tuesday, you regret that?
No, I can do Tuesdays on days we don't have council meetings.
Yeah.
Tuesday would work for me.
Yeah, it would work better for me.
Tuesdays, okay, Tuesday, the 24th, at 5:30. And I don't have agenda items yet, but I'm sure I can find plenty.
Yes.
I do have.
Probably an hour and a half.
An hour and a half, yeah, let's, yeah, set aside an hour and a half, 90 minutes. Okay, thank you for that.
We get paid extra for these, right?
Yes, definitely, no.
Time and a half?
One last thing I wanted to bring up is that we've been seeing some emails about the potential reimbursement opportunities for expenses incurred around implementing LD 2003. I think we had an email from Doug, kind of warning us that there's sometimes in the past when we've had these reimbursement opportunities for expenses incurred due to mandates coming down from the state, they have a lot of strings attached from them, to them, rather. So I think we were a little hesitant to apply for the, for the grants, but I, I know Doug isn't here, but I'm just, based on the emails I've seen, should, should we get some clarity around that? I know the dead, the deadline's coming up, that's why I wanted to bring it up, so.
I remember reading something in MMA Townsmen, maybe, also.
Yeah, they've been promoting it, too, yeah.
Well, I've read something indicating that, that you might be on the hook, on the hook, if you could take this money.
Oh, okay, yeah, so we've seen that from Doug, and apparently MMA has noted that. We've been getting, oh, that's.
And I'm, don't quote me on my source, I, I read it somewhere. I thought it was MMA, but.
It's one of those things where you read it and then you forget. GP Cog has been sending out emails, just encouraging people to apply for the funds. I mean, I could inquire with them to get a little more details if they have.
I remember this, it seemed like a, an opinion piece, and it seemed a little snarky to me, but.
Well, it has happened in the past. That's probably where the snarkiness comes from, because right now, there's nothing attached to it. But what, what will happen sometimes is that in the future, someone will reach in to the process and command that anybody who took this cash is now on the hook to, obliged to, you know, follow a new set of rules. I will tell you that my trust level with the state of Maine is at an all-time low because they have shown a huge appetite for undercutting home rule and dipping into past processes and, and reworking expectations that weren't the original intent of efforts. And I'm also more and more concerned because they pass these laws before any of the rules are known. And so, you might before the law, before the rules are written, but after the rules are written, you might have some buyer's remorse. Those are things that we can't control, so I'm, I, I'm personally okay if we don't apply for those funds.
I, I would like to understand what kind of strings might be attached before we just.
I think that's the problem. There's no, I don't think there are any right now.
Yeah, well, it is, it has been a very large expense within, particularly with staff time and undertaking all these edits that we have to make to our entire zoning ordinance in order to align. So I, if we can recoup some of that money, I don't know.
Yeah, the implication I got from Doug's memo or communication was that it, it wasn't, it was not a significant amount of money that, you know, it sort of, it seemed like it, the amount of money didn't justify the risk.
It was like 10,000, up to $10,000, I think.
Oh, was that the cap? I didn't realize it was that low.
It's 5 or $10,000, I think, depending on the size of the community.
So generous with all their funding.
Yeah, I noticed they didn't write a rule that actually reimburses us for our expenses, but just.
No, you have to apply for it first, but, yeah.
Well, it's a, you know, it was a political solution to try and, and get the people who are complaining off their back, quite frankly.
Okay, well, it sounds like maybe, Marty, what are your thoughts? Do you wanna try to find more information out about these funds or just move forward without seeking reimbursement?
Move forward.
Sounds like there's consensus to just leave it alone. Josh, I know you had an email about it, so do you need to get back to anybody?
No, that was, it was general sort of email that I just finally recalled and looked at and thought it was worth at least reaching a walk. Certainly, it didn't.
Oh, it is, always worth a discussion.
And it certainly doesn't have the context of, we have no rules, you may always back the money, and good luck, so.
Okay, well, I just wanted to touch base on that because we can't discuss things like that in email, and so.
No, I think, I'm glad you brought it up. And typically, I think we would all be in favor of recouping and recouping costs.
I was, when I saw it, I was like, let's do it, let them, yeah.
Doug had a lot of red flags.
We get 10,000 back and then have to spend 30,000 dollars later.
Right, exactly. Okay, so next on the agenda is the report from the Town Manager. Josh, did you, did you feel like you had something to report? I know you're, you're just starting, so.
I would just like to thank Kristin at the, running the planning meeting, when she ran into the situation of not having the quorum added. I think that she handled it very well. It's probably one of the worst situations in this position, you could probably, not the worst, but certainly among them. And she handled it admirably, she pivoted quickly, and then still sought to get the job done as quickly as possible, so just thanks to her. Which just goes out to my greater echo of just thanks to the entire staff of the Town of Gray. I've worked with them all for a long time. I've certainly never imagined myself in this position. And the way they've treated me, the education they're giving me, and the view that I now have see of the inner workings of the town is highly educational and definitely at a different level, and I have a lot of good people around me who are gonna help me get through the next couple of months, so thanks to them all, and next month I'll have a much better Town Manager's Report.
Okay, no, that's no worries. But, yeah, I just wanna officially welcome you, and we're all really glad to have you on board and steering the ship, that's for sure.
I agree.
Okay, I'm gonna start with, or, start, we're gonna do committee reports next. Ann, did you wanna start us off?
Sure, let's see. Open Space met on September 13th. Al Schaefer, who's our sort of GIS man extraordinaire, had put together a GIS map of Gray with multiple layers that we turn on and off as needed, so just as an example, we could activate the layer with all the conservation lands in gray and then add the layer of existing trails to see where we might wanna conserve trail corridors, or maybe conserve some land. So it was a really great meeting, and, and we ran out of time to review of what I was gonna present, which was more open space subdivision questions, but we hope to get that, to that at the next meeting. Neither CEDC nor Resiliency, which are my other two committees that, to which I'm a liaison, have a, has a quorum, or, and even, I think, or more than a couple of members. So I'm gonna meet with the CEDC Chair to discuss some options. I've heard there are several applicants for Resiliency. They're in the pipeline, but they didn't make it into the packet for this meeting.
Oh, okay, that's good to know, coming.
That's it for me.
Dan, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you. I had, had several conversations with residents regarding the amendments put before the Planning Board for the Campbell Acres subdivision. regarding the amendments, uh, put before the planning board for the Campbell Acres subdivision. This is an older subdivision that, um, has come up for an amendment. Uh, the amendment is significantly different than what was originally planned for the subdivision. Um, so there's, there is quite a lot of concern and interest by the residents who live in the area, um, about the current plans. I also spoke to a couple of people since the town meeting about budgets, uh, the budget conversation and answered some of those questions. I would just encourage anybody that has a question to please feel free to give me a call because those are, I, I find those very, um, enlightening conversations, both one, the question as it is that people are interested in finding answers to and then just the opportunity to talk about it. I am interested in understanding a little bit better the charge to the planning board, um, from state statute regarding their responsibilities and what documents they can use to guide their work. Um, I would like to seek some clarification, um, as to how the planning board, uh, may use the comp plan in their deliberations in addition to the ordinances, that's unclear to me. You know, and I think that that's an important, if the comp plan, which I believe can figure into the planning board decisions, I think that it's important that we, um, clarify that so that I can present that to them. It provides guidance, um, in their decision-making process that currently doesn't exist in ordinance. And it's my understanding that, um, while the gor- the ordinances are, um, you know, essentially law, that the plant, the, uh, the comp plan does have some value and can be used in their calculations, so I wanna, I want to sort that out. The finance meeting, oh, well, I'll let Marty take care of that one, um, that's all I have to report.
Marty?
Okay. Well, Blueberry Festival will have its final meeting on September twenty-sixth at six o'clock. And September seventh, we had a safety meeting and some highlights from that are, uh, uh, crosswalks, uh, parking, uh, the town, town purchasing, a couple of wheelchairs, uh, possibility of the Blueberry Festival be- becoming a two-day event. And ADA compliance was in there, was mentioned too. Uh, the finance committee meets Sep- September twenty-first at, at four P M. The zoning board of appeals meets September twenty-seventh, and I have nothing for community day or, or staff committee. And I believe we still, we still have a, the, the, the com- the committees meet on October fifth. We still doing that meeting?
No, we can't, we decided to cancel that during the retreat because, um, well, we're kind of in between, you know, leadership.
Just a point of information, is there an email going out to committee members to let them know that's been?
I'm not sure they even were communicated to about the date to begin with.
Some do, I know that, um, one of the finance committee members asked me if that was still on.
Oh, okay.
And Sandy had also mentioned it.
Yeah, she asked me also.
Okay, um, maybe we should all just email our respective committees, so that's not like a staff thing, yeah.
Let's cancel, okay.
Yeah, just, if we, if we could all just send an email to those we liaison with, yeah.
Good idea.
And that was, that, that meeting was on October fourth?
It was originally the fifth, yeah, which, we're just gonna have to postpone it because we're, it was something that Nate was leading the charge on and I don't, you know. I don't think Josh needs another ball.
Ten, six, uh, there was, it wasn't a time for that yet, it was just a day.
It was just a day, yeah, the fifth, it was a Thursday.
And, and what was it, what was it called, how do I refer?
It was a volunteer workshop, Nate liked to call it the Leadership Academy, but it was just like a, a way for all the committees to come together to talk about, um, what they're responsible for and any opportunities to collaborate, so. We will, we will post, we will reschedule this, you know, but it might not be for a little while.
Yeah, I thought Sandy referred to it as some sort of training, but that would be the same thing.
Kind of a training, yeah, volunteer training, yeah.
Actually, um, I pitched the idea, it took a few years to sell it to the council. The town of Cumberland does something similar where they actually do some strategic planning with their committees. From my point of view, we have roughly eighty-five people, community members who are serving on all the different town council committees. And a lot of times we say, you know, we wish we knew what people thought. Well, we have this pool, a very diverse pool of eighty-five people who are committed to volunteering for the town in one way, shape or form. And I don't think we leverage that as much as we could. In fact, when we get to have a conversation about public participation in the, um, selection process for the new town manager, I'm going to recommend that, um, we solicit, um, volunteers from people who are volunteering on the committee, committees. And, and that's where we get the, the sort of citizen participation. It's, training is an option, but I think there's also a strategic component there that we're not in a position to make use of yet. But I think, uh, the goal is to work that way, so it's disappointing that we're postponing it this year, but I agree with Krista. I think it's too good an idea that it won't come back.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we originally discussed implementing it, I'm, I, I was, personally, I was advocating for something similar to what Dan was saying. Is that it's sort of a strategic opportunity for committees to collaborate and find, you know, things they could work on together to do more efficiently. It kind of morphed into a volunteer training the first year for legal.
Nate was keen to take it in a different direction.
Yeah, for legal purposes, but I, I think we could touch on that lightly and focus more on the strategic side going forward.
Especially with the comp plan, because we know that the committees have work that they can do to help us further the comp plan. So, you know, that's a, a great way for us to make sure we're all pulling from the same side of the wagon.
Would we, like, I mean, do we have somebody that is, you know, um, well-versed in that strategic planning process that is on staff? Or, or would it make sense to hire a facilitator of?
That might be, I mean, la- last year when we hosted, it really was a bigger emphasis on the responsibilities of committees and like their reg- their legal responsibilities, so, right, so Alyssa, our, you know, town attorney came in and hosted that.
Anthony did some.
Anthony did like a, like a team, team building exercise, um. I think we, we could potentially enlist GP Cog to help facilitate something like that and be part of our member dues as they, they offer those types of services.
It's a really good idea, actually.
I, I did a, I was involved in a facilities, in a strategic, you know, as an employee in a strategic planning process that I thought was really valuable and, um, well-done and I, the, you know, administrator in charge seemed to, you know, be a true believer and, and sort of navigated the process. So, I think having somebody that, you know, knows the principles of strategic planning and how to, you know, conduct that meeting would be valuable.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think facilitator.
And maybe not just isolate it to a meeting, maybe, you know, it's a little, there's more to it than.
Yeah, potentially if the people find collaborative opportunities, yeah, you could expand on that, for sure. Um, just going back to committee reports, um, Marty, were you done with your committee reports? Matthew, did you have something?
Um, well, the rec committee met on, um, September eleventh. Unfortunately, I didn't bring my notes from the meeting, but, um, I know they, they talked quite a bit about trunk retreat and, um, the, the sort of demand for candy has outstripped their funding in the past and they, uh, they talked a lot about.
Very popular.
Yeah, they talked a lot about, um, fundraising for that. Um, they talked about a lot of things and I'm always really impressed with that committee. But, uh, it's, and again, I don't even, I didn't even, um, well, maybe I did capture when the next meeting is. Sorry about that. No, I, I wrote, wrote in my notes, but.
That's okay, don't worry.
Didn't bring my notes. Dry Mills Committee met, uh, yesterday at four P M. Uh, apparently they get a number of, of donations at the Blueberry Festival and they're gonna be working with, uh, with Justine 'cause there's a sort of a unique process there, um, to get those funds into, into their account. And, you know, there, there, there's been talk, I guess, about them maybe becoming an independent, uh, five oh one C three um, or becoming a subcommittee of historical society, just, um, 'cause it would simplify fundraising for them. And apparently I have a, I have a, I have a role in, um, notifying them of, uh, donations that go into their account, um, which I didn't know about. Sandy used to do it. As a counselor, but, um, because they like to send out acknowledgements of any donations they get. Um, and that all, and so it all goes through the town and they don't necessarily get the information they need, um, to do those acknowledgements.
Is that in the cha- uh, charge for the committee? We should, we might wanna update the charge if it doesn't reflect that responsibility.
Okay, I'm not, not sure. So, we, they, there was an open house in August, um, at the Dry Mills Schoolhouse, that was well-attended. There was lots of questions and appreciation for the committee, um, and they're gonna be working on a, on a grand reopening in twenty twenty-four. Um, they'll probably be closing things down in October. And have a grand reopening in twenty twenty-four where they're at, and they're working on, um, you know, a curriculum and, um, working with schools and, um, and, and elders and, and, and everyone on sort of having, uh, reenactors there to do, um, sessions with, with classes and things like that, talking about, um, what being in a one-room schoolhouse in the eighteen hundreds were like. Um, we're probably gonna be changing our meeting time to five fifteen. And also there is a historical society open house on Sunday, um, the tenth. Oh, uh, Sunday the first, excuse me, at two, two to four P M, October first, historical society open house.
Is that where they're showcasing the new fire truck?
Yes.
Yes, it's the welcome home.
Yeah.
Um, and they also discussed, um, maybe getting a segment on, uh, Gray Community Television, um, for their. You know, their sessions on, um, talking about the Dry Mills Schoolhouse, um, sorry, uh, oh, and we're meeting again. I can't remember when we're meeting again.
That's okay, that's okay.
Sorry to take up all your time here, and then, um, the Gray Community Television is meeting on the twenty-seventh of this month. I did not attend their last meeting, I think it conflicted with, uh, the budget process. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Oh, also, I should let you all know that I was contacted by GP Cog to meet with their executive director as a new, newly-elected person and I'm gonna do that on the eighteenth.
Yeah, sounds good. Christina's very nice. I, uh, met, had, my next GP Cog Executive Committee, uh, meeting is for, uh, October seventeenth. And I just wanna remind Dan and Josh that we had, um, RSVP'd to do the kind of Greater Gray GP Cog convening on the eighteenth at, what time was that at? I think it was at six o'clock, hold on one second.
Yeah, I think that's correct, yeah.
Um, six, yeah, six to seven, and the town of Gray is hosting, um, and I had been in touch with.
Wednesday, right?
It's a Wednesday, yeah. I had been in touch with Dani Deason, who's coordinating the event, and she was, had some questions about who she might, um, contact at, on staff to just coordinate with. Do you wanna get, let me know and I can forward that to her? I don't know who Nate had been work, I don't know, she said that this room had been reserved, but I don't, I don't know if it has or who was working with her previously, so.
And my mind's a little bit, it's starting to mix up with conversations.
That's fine.
I think, I can't remember which.
We can check in about it later, but I'll get back to her about that. She was also looking for suggestions on caterers, which I can, I had some thoughts on that, so.
Somewhere.
And then, uh, the ordinance advisory committee met on, um, September thirteenth. We reviewed, uh, Doug's proposed zoning changes and uses with the transition zone, which I shared with you at our retreat on Saturday. We had a really good conversation around that, and they're meeting again on September twenty-eighth. And I just wanted to say, um, I know we, I know we had, um, done committee assignments at the beginning of the year, 'cause I was a little unsure about my capacity. But if anyone's feeling like they need to, um, give up a committee, I'm, I'm happy to take on another one 'cause I feel like I'm not exactly pulling my weight on committees here, so, um, if you wanna think about it and let me know, we can always, um, address that at a later council date reassignments if people are feeling a little bit overworked. And then, yeah, so now we can just do correspondence and we'll wrap up for the evening after that. Um, Matthew, did you wanna start out with correspondence or activities?
No, I don't have, I don't have any, I, except for the, uh, GP Cog thing I mentioned.
Yeah, sure, that's great. Marty?
I don't have any either.
Dan?
Um, I kind of merged mine, I realized after the fact, my committee report, my apologies for that.
I was gonna interrupt you, but you were on a roll, so.
Well, I was gonna say, don't, don't hesitate to flag me down. I do have one that I think I can share with you, um, now. Between the, uh, marvels of modern technology, so, um, I met with James Esterbrook from the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office and, uh, Nate and the chief and, uh, uh, Tim from Public Works was also there. They basically were looking for clarification on the weight restrictions, especially with, um, Shaker Road. I volunteered to put together a flyer that the deputies will hand out if they stop trucks that are on there. I followed a FedEx truck the other day that turned down there. So, what you see on the screen is basically the flyer that I've, that I've proposed to the group that will mark basically all the main routes through town, um, and signify which ones are weight-restricted and what the weight restriction is. I also put on there a little bit of the ordinance and there's a Q R code, there's two pages. So, the front page sort of does the Village Mail Road and Shaker, and the second page talks about Marine Street. The Q R code will take, um, anybody to the ordinance itself. And we'll put a copy of the final version of this map on the website with the ordinance. So, people take it back to their business or share it with anybody else, they'll be able to do that pretty easily. I just have to locate, we have signs up now for where it's sig- signals to truckers that there is a weight limit on the road, and I need, wanna place the location of the signs on the map so that they know where, where those are. But this is the only, uh, uh, sort of other correspondence that I've, that I've had.
Okay, yeah, I apologize, I know you were looking for feedback on that and I think it slipped my mind, so are you, are you still looking for us to comment on it? Or are you ready?
Um, the sheriff's department kind of is driving this bus and they, they've signed off on it. But, yeah, if anybody has some suggestions, we're always proofread for errors, um, I'd be happy to, to get those.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it, it looks good, I like the map, I think that's really clear.
But, yeah, but that's all I have.
Yeah, it's great, good job.
Yeah, thank you, Dan, for working on that. Ann, did you have any correspondence?
Yeah, I did, actually. Um, I received an invitation from Rick Harbison at GP Cog to serve in the advisory committee for GP Cog's Vision Zero project. Um, they recently received Safe Streets and Roads for All, uh, Grant Money for this project. Uh, and the goal of Vision Zero is to eliminate all serious injuries and fatalities resulting from traffic crashes. And those are, that's not just cars, it includes bikers and pedestrians. And, uh, Rick and I had worked closely on the first bike ped plan that the council approved, GP Cog consulted to that. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to serve, but, uh, if anybody else is dying to, so to speak, uh, I'd, uh, entertain other suggestions.
I think they had a dead, they were hoping to have this approved. They had a, they were hoping to have this approved by the Executive Committee in April twenty twenty-four, right? So, it would be done before your, your term was up, right?
Right.
And just in time for us, actually, to put one more piece of supporting.
Yeah, so you're right, that it would be a supporting piece for our infrastructure work, potentially. I, I'm certainly all in favor of you volunteering. I think you're well-qualified. I guess my one thought was, I just wanna make sure we're not duplicating or, you know, undermining any work we've already done. I don't, I don't know exactly what we've come, will come of this, but I know it's more than just Gray. It's, it's all like kind of the greater.
Yeah, it's more regional. I mean, the possibility exists that there, that there will be other high-crash locations around the region that, and, and Gray won't be identified. So, I mean, I just, I'm going into it with that knowledge. I just don't, I mean, part, one of the first meetings is to look at the data.
Okay.
And so, I, I just don't know what that looks like.
If Gray is not identified as one of the sites, I know that there's some funding available for site, for potentially addressing these issues. So, if we're not identified as one of the sites with, with high-crash issues, or we wouldn't be eligible for that funding, is that right?
I don't know, but I, I assume that that's probably right, but I don't know for sure.
But any standards that come out of it or suggest, you know, that come from the group would just be something that we can incorporate into our own plans. I will say that it came up in conversation from, I'm not sure his official title, but James Esterbrook of the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office did say that there have been fewer crashes at the North Raymond, Shaker Road intersection since those improvements have been made.
That's good to hear.
I thought that was good news.
That is good news. Krista and Nate and I met right before Nate left with members of Senator King's staff regarding the village, what I'm referring to as the Village Transformation Project and our interest in a RACE grant. And they will share the information with Senator Collins' staff, and Senator Collins has apparently more, you know, pull or power around RACE grant approval than, than King does. But they, so we'll just continue to keep them informed. I received notice of a Community Change Grant, which I passed on to Mary Sweeney Underwood and Anthony Doms, and so they're looking into that. Mary had an idea for it. It was a small amount of money, only like fifteen hundred bucks, I think. And the council had our retreat on September sixteen, sixteenth, and I went to that, and, and I talked to several community members about the budget and the special town meeting.
Thanks, Ann. I had several emails from various residents requesting me look at a charter revision to address the need for a town meeting if the budget fails, which we will be talking about as a council, how we will move forward with that. I also have an email that I need to respond to from Brandon Pollard requesting we meet to, so I can tour his facility. We had been in touch and just need to schedule a date. I had an email from Andre Jenkins, one of the people that were here at the beginning of the meeting, also just asking to have an introductory meeting to get back to him. I had an email from Mary Sweeney Underwood, just noting that she had received some feedback from one of her Nordic walking participants that they had gained so much confidence through the program that they were able to enter and complete a five K race.
Wow, that's great.
Isn't it? So, that's really great to hear. And then I had an inquiry, as did Josh, from the Portland Press Herald. They were inquiring about our letter that we spoke to this spring about our pending audit for F Y twenty twenty, twenty-two and the investigation. We have referred to the Assistant District Attorney for some misappropriation of funds during that year. We just noted that we can't share any further details than what I've just noted and that the Assistant District Attorney has, is handling the case from there. So, I haven't heard back again, but theoretically, they're writing a piece for the Portland Press Herald. I don't know when, but there might be some further questions around that going forward. And that's all I had, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn much later than eight fifty at nine thirty-nine P M.
One second.
Second.
I'll give that, I'll give the second to Ann. Okay, thank you, everyone, and have a good night. It's late. Yeah, sorry, Dan, go ahead.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm also a. I'm a yes, so we're a German.